Can you just quickly go through and mute everyone? Except us.
I think we'll do it.
Okay. Is something you wanted to be doing with this meeting? Whenever you're ready.
Oh, okay, great. This is a work session of community planning and development in EPS with the Board of County Commissioners and the Planning Commission. What we wanted to do today was provide you the presentation that we conducted at the Town Hall meeting on last Tuesday. And just go through that as kind of a good starting point for our discussion today on initiating a code amendment regarding short-term rentals. So I see Rachel is with us. So I'll go ahead and start. The packet is...
So I do have an open in PowerPoint, too.
That's her. That's Rachel's. Okay, that's Rachel's. I need the other one.
Second row, third over.
There it is. Oh, thank you. I'm sorry. I have a hard time sitting down, which is embarrassing. All right. Okay. So as I mentioned, we brought this presentation to the public on last Tuesday, the 9th of January. And we highlighted some of the areas of review that we wanted EPS to focus on. This is not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the... Oh, excuse me. These are actually the core of the presentation that we're going to present today. So we're going to do a map review. We're going to define what staff is calling a community housing overlay. We're going to look at the degree of current STR use. And then we'll go into, we'll take a little break and go into Rachel's presentation, which really dives into the details of the recommendations coming forward. And then staff will take over and we'll talk about a cap discussion and what we've put it out to the community through a survey online. We'll talk about the process and what our upcoming dates are. And then when we did the presentation, we took public comment, which we had quite a bit of. All of this is on, if you want to watch that portion, we're capturing that and providing it to you. But if you want to watch any of the public comment, everything's already up online. And the other item is that the website also, as we get into the cap discussion, all of this voting matrix is online. And so we're already, we've taken in some voting, but we're going to continue to push this out until the public hearing, so that hopefully we've got really good feedback for you. The driving kind of goal of the work has been balancing the preservation of attainable local housing, looking at environmental stewardship, and then also recognizing the economic opportunity that short-term rentals bring to the community, both through providing lodging during peak visitation, as well as capturing sales and lodging tax for the community. So with that. This is, we started looking at areas within the community that we really wanted to focus on, the thought that maybe these are more of our community housing, attainable housing areas. So our variables were that it was housing with a low to moderate cost. Also accessibility. We wanted to make sure that there was food access, school access, medical care, parks and transit. So you'll see in the shaded area is what we landed on for the overlay. This is all of the West Park additions, 1 through 4, parts of Cooper and Capital subdivision, which is 12 Streets through 17th. This area on Toledo or Chicken Hill, and then the area just east of the city limits in the North Leadville addition. We also considered the manufactured home communities, which are connected by transit with Mountain Valley Estates, Mountain View Villages East and West, and of course Lake Fork. So this creates, the shaded areas create what we're going to continue talking about as a community housing overlay. And then to consider how many housing, or how many short-term rentals are currently existing within this area. The areas that are not included mean that there are no short-term rentals in any of those other areas yet. So the highest concentration is within the West Park neighborhoods, Cooper's and Capital subdivisions, with a total of 19 current licenses in these area. This will become a key aspect of our discussion when we start talking about creating caps. Then to look at where else are the current licenses held? And we refer to this as Central Lake County. But basically, it's north and west area outside of those shaded neighborhoods. So this includes neighborhoods such as Matchless, Jim Valley, Four Seasons, Silver Hills, Turquoise Lake Estates, Mountain Pines, Grand West, Seven Lakes, Cooper's Meadow, as well as Out by Turquoise, and then as far south as Dow and Track. And so we have a total of 39 licenses in this area. And this is over on County Road 6C. This is, we have one over there. The north area of the county, which this is basically just Highway 91, and we have 12 registered licenses in that area. The highest concentration is in the south part of the county with 57 licenses, really within the Panarc, Ross, Village of Twin Lakes and Gordon Acres. And then we thought it would be a benefit to see kind of the concentration or saturation in these areas. So first, this is Panarc and Ross. Keeping in mind, all of these polygons only represent a single short-term rental. So sometimes these shaded out areas look kind of look like a concentration, but it's actually just one short-term rental. It's just a one parcel. And then the Village of Twin Lakes. So again, this looks kind of like a high saturation, but keep in mind, this only represents two short-term rentals. These parcels in here all are in single ownership and only represent one as well. So before, we had 44 in total between the Panarc and Ross subdivisions. And over here, we have 13 total in Gordon Acres and the Village. So these are some of the areas that I referenced before that we ask EPS to focus on. Again, it's not an exhaustive list, but these are some of the big takeaways from our listening session and just concerns of staff. So primary and standard STR classification. We immediately heard from public input that there is a desire within the community to achieve homeownership stability through being able to have the opportunity to have a short-term rental license. So primary classification means any property that's being used as a primary resident. And we're going to expand on that a bit to say, not only the owner occupied, but if there is a tenant in the property and the property owner were to give them permission to obtain a short-term rental license, they would be included in that classification as well. And then, of course, standard is any property that's not being served, being utilized as a primary residence. So the focus of the work has been on sustainability and preservation of the local community housing. And so between the two different classification types, as well as creating that housing overlay, that has been one of the key points in establishing the new regulations. We looked at a review of environmental impacts while on septic, specifically septic over-maximization of septic systems and the threat to groundwater and wells. Community character and lifestyle, tourism and lodging, and then best practices, really looking around the state and saying, what are the lessons learned? Where are there takeaways that we can apply to our regulations? And so that's really some of the key points Rachel's going to talk in depth about quite a bit. And so I am going to go ahead and turn it over to Rachel with Vice President of EPS. And as many of you probably remember, Rachel participated when EPS conducted our housing needs assessment. And so it's just been really beneficial to be able to go into engagement with a firm, and specifically with Rachel, who really understands Leadville Lake County. And so we could just hit the ground running. So it's been really nice to be able to do that. So Rachel, I'm going to go ahead and queue up your PowerPoint. And turn it over to you.
Perfect. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
Excellent. Well, good morning. Nice to join you virtually. And just continue this conversation. And so as Anne said, this is what was presented at the Town Hall last week. And really based on the conversations that we'd had throughout the process, the engagement that had taken place before we started this specific work, and then also sort of the driving factors underlying the code amendments, we landed on these five categories of policy or strategy. And so we'll be walking through each of them. But really, we're looking at the geography and location of short-term rentals, which Anne just went over in a preview. Different licensing components, how we think about environment, health and safety as it relates to short-term rentals. And then education and enforcement, which are sort of different approaches, but within the same policy umbrella. And just want to make sure that we have these underlying assumptions that this is all being done in recognition of the fact that tourism is a key economic sector in the county. And STRs are a core component of the lodging inventory. You know, we all understand the commercial purpose-built lodging that exists and does not exist in the county. And if we want visitors to keep coming, which we do, they need places to stay. But at the same time, we understand that these units are having neighborhood and environmental impacts. And so we're looking to craft a policy that balances these factors. So utilizing short-term rentals for the economic benefit that they have and increasing the lodging inventory, but also mitigating some of those impacts. And so we're going to walk through each of these. And like I said earlier, I mean, I've chatted with each of you about this already, but also this was done building off of the engagement that staff had already completed. And so there was, I think, like 63 pages of written feedback from the community, and we read through all of it. We talked with a variety of stakeholders with the goal of having a policy that balances some of the different perspectives and factors underlying short-term rental considerations. And so the geography and location, like Anne had said, we're really looking to understand which areas of the county are better suited to visitation and which are really our core areas that are most accessible for local housing and really preserving those areas for that purpose. So looking to differentiate policies and regulations based on these locations, so using the neighborhood housing overlay to create that differentiation. And then understand how that applies with different license caps or different other policies. But the underlying driver of that is really preserving those areas where there are local housing opportunities and ensuring that those neighborhoods don't become entirely short-term rentals. And getting at that now, because it may or may not feel this way, but we're actually in a really good place right now. We're sort of recognizing the challenges that are coming down the road. And through this process, putting some parameters in place to safeguard against what other communities are really feeling the impacts of and trying to roll back and go backwards. And so utilizing this opportunity and this time to put those guardrails in place to make sure that we're managing both local housing opportunities and short-term rental opportunities. So I think we can go to the next slide. So a lot of this will come out through licensing. So we have three slides on licensing, really looking at building on the existing program and creating a little bit more nuance and more regulation. And so again, on each of these, we have these policy objectives on the left-hand side. And that's really based on what we heard and what the county's goals were, what the premise of the new regulations are. And so with licensing, we're looking to, one, understand how many are in the community. So right now, we have a good sense of numbers. And then looking to just increase data collection through licensing to understand like how many bedrooms, how many bathrooms, some other components to start tracking change over time. The key piece is differentiating between primary resident and non-primary resident, and then also capping by area. And so the biggest change we're looking at is the introduction of these licensed categories. And so a primary resident would be anyone who claims their primary residence in Lake County. And so for the most part, these tend to be owner-occupied homes. Using primary resident as opposed to owner-occupied allows for the opportunity for renters who have an agreement with their landlord to also participate. Obviously, that's subject to the lease agreement, but just not precluding renters if the opportunity is available to them. But what this license would be is really just available to anyone who lives in the county as their primary residence to utilize their home as a short-term rental. So race weekends, other times where, you know, there's a lot of people coming into the county. We need a lot of lodging inventory, and there's potentially a lot of money to be had, and someone can really help themselves afford where they live. Everybody in the county could theoretically get that license. And that would be one per resident. Then the standard licenses is where we would start capping and limiting how many short-term rentals we can have in the community. And then within that, we're looking at some different restrictions. And again, these are all sort of preliminary ideas or recommendations, and the whole purpose of this session is to talk through them. But capping at one per parcel. So if there is, say, like a primary unit and an ADU, they cannot both be short-term rentals. Not allowing them for ADUs unless they're a primary residence. There's also, there's some different ways to think about this. The idea behind further restrictions on ADUs is that the premise of the ADU policy was to increase local housing opportunities. And so ideally, we don't want to see all of those units turn into short-term rentals. But understanding where and how those might contribute to, you know, the additional revenue might help local residents afford the home they're in. So understanding how to nuance that, but recognizing that we might need some specific, a specific approach to ADUs. And then this last bullet point is key. Not allowing transfer of a license at sale or transfer of title. This is starting to become best practice across the state. And this really reduces the speculative investment. And so not allowing the transfer along with a cap on licenses will reduce the number of people using the assumption of a short-term rental in their purchasing decision. And so that's a really key piece to help reduce the speculative investment. So then on the next slide, then capping licenses. And so like I was saying, the non-transferability along with the license cap really helps limit the speculation. And so we see the highlighted number here because what the cap might be is still an open question. But the cap would apply to the standard licenses. So like we said, the primary residence, there would be no cap on those. Anyone who lives in the county as their primary residence could get a license. It's those other licenses that would be capped. And so there are a couple of different ideas. So there's currently 127 licenses, taking out the couple of those that are currently held by primary residents. That would free up some licenses. And then West Park or that neighborhood housing overlay overall, but, you know, in reality, it's West Park because that's where the licenses currently are, would be capped at that current number. So within that neighborhood housing overlay, there could be no more than 19 short-term rental units. And then how this works is that, you know, some people might just not renew their license. They decide they don't want to do it anymore. That would go back into the pool and be available. Or because the licenses are not transferable as properties sell or transfer, then those licenses go back into the pool, and then those licenses are available. And so there would be a waitlist system for people who want to get in line for available licenses. And then the last licensing slide is really, again, just building on what's currently in the code. And so the local contact requirement, so right now, it just knows that there has to be somebody local available 24 hours. We would recommend adding that they have to be able to be at the property within a certain period of time or distance, like we talked about in the Town Hall. And as was my personal experience getting up there, time and travel is a little finicky in the mountains. So potentially just using a distance requirement, but just making sure that there is somebody who can be available to respond to any challenges. And then just maintaining that annual renewal requirement and potentially adding in this use requirement. And so again, with a cap on licenses and the recognition that these units are important for the lodging inventory, we want to make sure that they're being used. And so one way to address that is to require that for someone to renew their license, it has to have been used within the previous year. And so right now, we have in there a minimum 14 nights. That, you know, is a reasonable requirement based on sort of current occupancy and visitation numbers. That can be adjusted as long as it's reasonable and related to the goal of just maintaining accessibility of those licenses. So if someone's not using their license, we want to make sure it's available for others. So that's sort of the geography and the licensing component. That's sort of the overall framework of the recommendations, is where are these units and how are the licenses issued and managed? Then we get into the environment, health and safety components. And that was another driving factor of this code amendment process, was there were some concerns about use of these properties, particularly properties that are on well and septic systems. And so we chatted a lot about what, you know, what the sort of service level concerns are and then what those actually mean in terms of use of the property and how they can be managed. And so we've come up with sort of a two-part framework for policy with an overlying restriction. And so the first bullet point is that properties with seepage pits cannot get short-term rental licenses. It's just too big of a risk. And so those properties would have to be upgraded if the owners wanted a short-term rental license. For all other properties, there are these two components. So one is occupancy and one is inspection, which relates to the quality of the system. And so a big concern with short-term rentals on septic systems is overuse of the property. So too many people in there, too much going into the system, and system failure. And so the two bullet points here, so the occupancy would be set within the license, and it would be based on the system design report. So if the system design report, which would have to have been after 2014 when the records were digitized, so based on the second bullet point, if that doesn't exist, it would be based on the safety inspection that we'll get to later. So if that design report says the unit decides for six people, the maximum occupancy of the short-term rental is six people. That's it. There's no ifs, ands or buts about it. If someone thinks they have higher occupancy, so let's say there's no design report on record for the system, the fire safety inspection says, you know, five people, they think they can have seven, that person would have to independently get an engineering report to prove that. So that's the first thing, is the occupancy directly tied to the system capacity. And then the second piece is ensuring the quality and upkeep of these systems. And so ensuring that if a property is being used as a short-term rental, that septic system is being inspected regularly. And so we have a potential framework here. And this was crafted with David based on sort of local inspector capacity and then also just understanding what seems reasonable for an ongoing basis. So we would want any unit that has a short-term rental to show an initial inspection by the end of next year. That has to have been done within the past five years. So based on this, if someone had an inspection in January 2021, that would work for this, because by the end of 2025, it's current within the past five years. And then starting two years from now in January 2026, it's a three-year cycle. So every three years, based on the last inspection, the system has to be inspected again. And then the framework for that would be the existing transfer of title requirements. So those same repair categories, and then understanding the major and the minor. So if there's a major issue, no permit is issued, like no short-term rental permit. If there's a minor issue, then it's pending repairs. And that's just to make sure that in addition to maintaining those occupancy limits, we know that at a base level, these systems are in good health. And then the next slide goes into additional health and safety for responses to concerns. And so there is also concerns about occupancy in other units. So for short-term rental units that are not on septic systems, it would be based on the legal bedrooms from the fire safety inspection. And then general occupancy is two people per bedroom, and then plus one or plus two. Different communities take different approaches. I've noted there Leadville is two people per bedroom plus two. And that's just to account for like a sleeper sofa, something like that. And then just prohibiting outdoor fires for short-term rental properties when they're being used as short-term rentals. So obviously, owners, unless there's a fire ban, can do what they want with their property. But as in use as a short-term rental, just prohibiting outdoor fires. And then, so the next two pieces are how we kind of ensure that these new regulations work. And so one piece is education. And what we heard a lot is that we really want this both for the owners of the units and for the guests. And so for the owners, understanding particularly for well and septic regulations and other health and safety regulations, why we need them and what they do for them as owners. So, you know, yes, you can make more money putting 12 people in your home than you can putting six people in there. But that increased revenue probably won't cover the cost of replacing your septic system when it fails because there were too many people in the unit. And so just helping communicate that, helping people understand what it actually takes to get these things repaired in a community like Lake County where construction season is not 12 months a year, and there's limited labor availability. And so really, these are good things to follow and best practices. And then, you know, some tips and tricks on how and why to maintain septic systems. And then also for utilizing these properties as short-term rentals. So things, you know, if you're renting a property consistently throughout the summer and in between every rental, we're washing all the sheets and the towels on-site, that's a lot of water from the washing machine going into the system in addition to all the guests. And so potentially utilizing off-site laundry or putting a buffer period time in between bookings to let the system recover a little bit. Just helping provide people some of these options, not forcing them on anyone, but helping people who may not be familiar with these systems and some of their sensitivities understand how they might take better care of their system while using the property as a short-term rental. And then for guests, one is utilizing the guide that's currently in process or might actually be done at this point. I haven't talked to Adam about an update. But putting a Good Neighbor Guide in all of these units and saying like, welcome to our community. It might not be like other communities you've been to, and here are some things that you should know, you know, like, don't leave trash outside. There is wildlife. It is wildlife. don't leave trash outside. There is wildlife. It is wild. Here's how different roads in the county work. And then also like here's how to be in a place with a septic system. Don't, you know, dump your grease down the drain, please. And just other community best practices, you know, talking about public property and private property and all these things just to help better manage some of the neighborhood and community issues and then also some of those septic concerns. Then the last piece is enforcement. And so the underlying component of this is just maintaining the current enforcement mechanisms that are in the code in terms of complaints and violations and hearings and all of that. And, you know, what the consequences are in terms of losing licenses, not having access for a certain period of time. And then doing very specific compliance for occupancy limits. And so that would mean monitoring the listings to ensure that what's on the license is what's being listed as the number of people. Obviously, we can't control how many people someone brings after they book it, but we can at least make sure that it's not being listed for more people than the occupancy is. And then mandating the fire safety check at the time of licensing. And then again, that reinspection every three years, which would be the same inspection cycle for time period as the septic. It doesn't necessarily have to happen at the same time. And that would be looking for the smoke detectors, CO2 detectors, extinguishers, egress, and then also setting those number of bedrooms for that occupancy if the occupancy is not based on a septic design report. And then some additional considerations for the future. So that was a lot for some code amendments. But thinking through, once these are in place, what might come next? And so one, I alluded to this at the beginning, but improving some of the data collection through licensing. So just better understanding not just how many units there are and where they are, but how big they are, how often they're used. You know, if we implement the fourteen-night minimum, we'll know that they're at least used a minimum of fourteen nights. But just a better understanding. I'm probably a little bit biased in this because I'm a data person, but more data just helps us make better decisions. And so as we're looking down the road to reevaluate how the updated code is working, more data will help us better understand that. And then the second one is in process, just updating the licensing fee to actually cover the cost to the county of administering the program. And then potentially undertaking a nexus study to support a housing regulatory fee. So recognizing that as all of these guests come into the community, we need services to support that visitation. Those services need workers, those workers need places to live, and we know that housing is a major challenge in the community. And so we can actually create a connection between the visitation and the need for local housing and utilize a regulatory fee to help fund local housing programs. So that might be a future step. And then right now, all the licensing is being done internally. And we think that the amendments that are being considered are doable within that system. If more complexity is introduced later, if staff capacity changes or if we don't go with caps and the number of licenses really increases, then potentially considering some sort of licensing or compliance software. Most of the communities that use these have thousands of licenses, not one hundred and twenty-seven. So like I said, it's not necessarily a priority right now, but just something to keep in the back of our minds. I think that's everything for this.
Great. Thank you, Rachel. And then we're going to just figure, finish up here a little bit with a discussion on caps and next steps. So, so at the town hall meeting, we presented three different options that we have currently online for voting. And so option A is to cap the amount of standard licenses at one hundred and twenty-seven. And so only new light, new opportunities come on when a property doesn't renew or is sold. That non-transferable clause that we would put in code would trigger some opportunity as well as going through the existing stock of short-term rentals and identifying that are primary. All three of these consider no cap on primary use because again, trying to achieve that goal of providing a pathway to sustainability. And there would be no new standard licenses issued in the community housing overlay. And you'll see that in all three options as well. So currently those nineteen licenses that we have in that community housing overlay, that would set, at this moment in time, that would be the only degree of standard licensing that we would see. Additionally, under all of these options, a recommendation is that we do not allow any standard license in any of the manufactured home communities. And these communities serve a high percentage of very critical AMI ranges. And so all three options and the code recommendation itself would not increase the any, to allow any standard licenses with any of those communities. And this option A is very predictable and it currently is representing about four point seven percent of our total housing stock. Option B considers some growth in short-term rentals. And so option B would be increasing the cap to one hundred and seventy, which is similar to the city of Leadville. City of Leadville currently has one hundred and seventy-one licensed class two, I believe. They have a different classes for licenses, is that? So a class-two license, they have one hundred and seventy-one. And that represents their percentage that they've been trying to achieve is twelve percent, not exceed twelve percent of their overall housing stock. Everything else stays the same. This represents increasing the overall degree of use to about six point three percent of our housing units. And then option C is saying no cap whatsoever except in, and that's supposed to be, oh, it did get changed. Good job, Cece. In the community housing overlay, we had a couple of different titles for that, so the acronym had changed a little bit. So this option B and option C, I would say in considering additional growth is also consideration that the recommendations that are being brought forth preserve local housing stack. We're pushing short-term rentals into an area that, you know, where we want to sustain visitation, but in more appropriate settings, settings that the the housing, cost of housing is higher and it's less accessible to me, community housing goals. And then that coupled with the environmental stewardship approach to the regulations as far as having the septic inspections and the fire safety check. So option B and option C assume a certain reliance that we've really kind of hit the mark with the policy recommendations and that we're citing short-term rentals or locating them in areas that are more appropriate for the use. Option C is not one that I think Rachel nor I would strongly recommend. And it does have a less predictable aspect to it. So we will continue, like I said, to keep this voting option online through the public hearing for the code amendment. So we'll have some, hopefully some good participation in that. Right now we have no voting for option C. I think we only have fifteen votes in, is that right? And the preference right now is option A, but with some votes for option B. But again, it's still very early and we'll continue to drive that voting through the process. And so how do we, how do we kind of compare? I think it's always good to just kind of where this is not kind of, I don't know how to get rid of that bar. How, this is not really the end-all-be-all approach, but it is good to say, hey, when we look around the state, are we really disproportionate in our percentages? And you'll see that we aren't. You know, we're pretty comparable at our current one hundred and twenty-seven. We're in fact a little modest in comparison to other communities in the state. Rachel kind of talked about this, but we really emphasize this to the public at the town hall meeting. Current licensing, we have built in time in the new policies for them to become compliant. We understand that there aren't a lot of septic inspectors available in Lake County right now. We're trying to incentivize that to increase. But we, and they're typically busy with transfer of title and other aspects. So we wanted to make sure that we weren't recommending a policy that would be impossible for current licensed properties to come into compliance with. Interviewed by Steve Boyle about the fire safety check. This is something the city already does, and he said he had the bandwidth to incorporate this. He got the timeframe of an every-three-year cycle. They would certainly have the capacity. He emphasized that he strongly supported this and that it's been efficient and effective in the city. So we answered quite a few questions about that aspect. Today we're having, we're taking, bringing these policy recommendations to you for discussion to help inform staff in initiating a code amendment. So that we're going to, I'd like to go back kind of through Rachel's slides and just do a quick check-in with the planning commission and the board to make sure that that the recommendations are resonating or if there's questions that we can dive into a little bit on how those actually become code. And then we're going to take what we gained today, start formulating the code amendment and get ready to host it in a public hearing on February twenty-sixth for the planning commission and the board of county commissioners. And then we're asking, we've already requested a special meeting on February twenty-eighth for some decision on the recommended policy. This also coincides with the expiration of the moratorium. So we are sliding into home. And that really kind of concludes the presentation that we did for the public. And so Rachel, I thought it would be really beneficial if I'm going to kind of share your slides, take them kind of one at a time, just talk about the overall. Staff was going to kind of talk about how this drives the edits to the code and make sure that there aren't any questions or gather feedback on kind of the direction based on the policy recommendations that we've been working on to inform the code amendment draft and next steps. So does that make sense to everyone? Okay, great. So I'm going to go back to E+'s presentation and we'll start. Okay. All right, great. Oh, I have to start moving. Okay, there we go. So we'll skip to the next slide where we start diving in. So geography and location. So I think the first thing that we want to just kind of hear back on is our creation of the community housing overlay. Again, making sure that those boundaries make sense. Any questions about any of that mapping that we've prepared? Any questions on anything there?
Can you go through the maps again?
Yeah, absolutely. You bet. So let me.
Because for me, anyway, I mean, that idea of trying to preserve community character and not have any individual location get overrun makes a ton of sense.
Yes.
That kind of aligns with what the city did.
Yeah.
Trying to minimize local core in that.
All right. Downtown Core?
Talking specifically about West Park, of course.
Okay, I'm going to actually, let me back up a little bit. So these shaded areas are specifically where we would create within the code, identify these as our community housing overlay. And it does, it includes all of West Park additions, one through four. So this is Ridgeview Drive, Twelfth Street through Seventeenth, which is part of Capitol and Cooper's subdivision. This area on Chicken Hill, again, because largely because of its adjacency to the city periphery and as well as this portion of North Leadville Edition.
Can you tell me exactly where that, where you are right now? What is that? I can't see the streets, so.
Right in here?
No.
Oh, right here?
Not too, no, but that's.
This would be like Eleventh, Twel- no, twelve, eleven, ten.
So that's still up on Chicken Hill. Okay, gotcha.
Well, that's like Seventh through Fourth Street.
Okay, so that's straight up and it's county right outside of the city.
Oh, no, you're right. I'm so sorry.
That's okay. So that's going up to Fifth Street, which is the boundary for county and going.
Yes, yeah, I'm sorry.
Going back to mine district, yeah, okay.
Yes, yeah.
Thank you.
So it'd just be these areas here.
Two blocks there, okay.
And there's also, you know, this is kind of where we've seen a little bit of that dual zoning between urban residential and industrial mining too. So there's, you know, there's some other aspects there that are, you know, just kind of create a little bit of, you know, concern from environmental preservation and sure.
I had a question on this map, like was there a consideration of going further down Mountain View and County Road Four? Because I'm thinking of our residential zoning and some of the discussion we've had about where additional housing could go. And I'm just, I don't know, like.
I was surprised that that's not included.
Yeah.
Or I'm curious, yeah, why County Roads Four and Seventeen weren't included.
Like I could think of going, yeah, I mean, almost all the way down to Turquoise Lake and Elk Trail and like some of those neighborhoods down Mountain View the same way.
Well, I think that we're looking at price points, those neighborhoods, you know, are not, you know, from a cost approach. Four Seasons, or I'm sorry, Mountain Pines, Elk Trail, even West Woods. Those price points were a little outside of what we were kind of focusing on. So those.
In terms of protecting the local housing or in terms of what makes sense to short-term rent?
In terms, I think in terms of housing costs, the modern, like, the more attain, like, what you would consider like attainable.
I thought was going down Mountain View, just to your question, Jeff, too, is those are larger lots. So the impact is spread out, more expensive homes, so less investment opportunity. But yeah, less impact all the way down, all the way to Turquoise Lake, only because of the size of those lots typically, available parking. You don't have to worry about the condensation like you would in West Park.
Yeah, these are definitely higher density areas. And they're, you know, just based on lot size. And so, yep. And, and again, trying to kind of keep that accessibility, walkability aspect in, in focus. And we can look at, we can look at the degree of use in those areas because that's the next slide. So that's right here. So you can see the degree of use that we currently have. We've got thirty-nine licenses and actually if you combine thirty-nine plus the nineteen in West Park and the twelve or thirteen that we have north, all of those together are stronger than what we have down south. So when you actually divide it between northern and southern, if you, if you try it in kind of northwest and south, we actually have a higher concentration currently in those areas. But we did, density was definitely like Joey said too, you know, that's, it's another aspect. Density, housing costs, accessibility is kind of why we delineated where we did. But I wonder, I mean, Rachel did say, you know, the overlay is to make sure that these neighborhoods don't become primarily short-term rentals.
Correct.
And I think that cost can change. And if it's not so densely or concentrated now, is there, do we see Harmon including those? Because I do think that it's, it seems like looking ahead, it might be good to. I would say that, you know, that's going to be a more restrictive approach. I, you know, I think that what we were trying to do is define these as, as community housing areas. So we take out, typically we take out the price point because they are higher in cost. A house in Mountain Pines, a house in Silver Hills, a house is, it doesn't, isn't comparable to the areas that we have. We've taken out the kind of walkability aspect, but.
I'm sorry, I didn't.
No, 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 go ahead.
But I think in terms of like housing costs, I mean, there are homes listed in West Park Four higher than what homes have sold in Silver Hills Four a year ago. So I don't actually know if that's a decent metric.
Well, I would say that if you go, I think another way to address this is a more aggressive cap. So if you. So, if you, I think instead of expanding that preservation area, I would suggest that, and Rachel, you can weigh into, I would keep kind of our variables kind of really consistent. And then if you want to degrade overall throughout the county and look at kind of keeping levels where they are, then I think that the approach is a more conservative cap instead of expanding that boundary.
Okay. Which is good, cause that, I mean, especially option A, so that's, that's essentially fixed standard licenses. So there's, yeah. So, things could shift around, but it's not gonna be like an explosion in some neighborhood.
Right, right. I will say that I, we have a pretty high concentration right now in West Park.
Short term leases?
Yep.
Yeah.
And the density in this area, you know, we've got seventy-five hundred square, or generally, you know, about, what, a tenth of an acre, a little over a tenth of an acre lot, either point one seven of an acre lot. And so, you increase your degree of impact, you, you know, they, they are more accessible. So, definitely in this area, we're saying we're not gonna increase any more standard licenses in this area. So, I think if you expand that out, then we would be saying we're not gonna increase anymore in those other areas of standard licenses beyond. And so, I think the best way to do that is to, to maybe cap where we are, then expand the boundary. Rachel, do you have any feedback on that?
I mean, I think that's, right, I think, I mean, West Park in particularly, in particular, came up over and over again, as we were chatting with folks and in the previous feedback. But it's, I mean, price is one factor. Again, this is, it's, it's a policy imperative of which areas do we want to have more stringent regulations on for a variety of community goals and priorities. And so, there is an opportunity to expand that area if we want to. But I think, like Anne was saying, in conjunction with the cap, we'll likely get at a lot of these issues and then like specifically capping, you know, the community housing overlay at a lower level or at like exactly what it is right now. Because with the cap for the remainder of the licenses, they can go wherever in the county. So theoretically, if a lot of them didn't get renewed or all of those properties sold and all of the licenses went, for example, to people like in Twin Lakes, then yeah, there could be a huge concentration in Twin Lakes. Is that likely? No, but like that is something that could happen within this policy. So if there are other areas that we think are priorities for preservation, that's where the boundaries could be expanded. But based on the primary goal of community housing opportunities based on the metrics that Anne outlined at the beginning, these, yeah.
I would also say there's another key aspect here, and that is homeowner associations. You know, we can support any homeowner associations that want to put in more stringent regulations than what we have. And all of those areas that you're considering expanding to, whether they need maybe some support in becoming a more restrictive HOA, they have the opportunity. So, you know, from Silver Hills, Four Seasons, Matchless, Mountain Pines, you know, they, they have strength in preserving their subdivision, their community through protective covenants. And so, even, we're having a conversation, there's a new leadership present in Panarc. They're doing remarkable things with Miwa, they're installing meters and have an, incentivizing that to meter water use, which now with the septic regulations. But we were also going to discuss with them, and we have future conversations in place that maybe this is a time within kind of this new leadership and, and, and kind of overall management, that maybe they want to come together as a community and look at establishing. I know it's gonna take a lot, but it does seem like they have a more active membership than they've had in recent time. And so, we would definitely always encourage all of the subdivisions that want to take a more aggressive approach, that they certainly could do that. So I think that's good to keep in mind that, you know, these, the areas that we have capped lack that. And so, I think that's another key factor in, in considering. Expanding it and, and finding a way to empower those HOAs.
Okay. Based on the current licenses, maybe I missed it. And then when you might probably associate the license as primary or standard, how many do we think will open up?
So specifically, I looked in these nineteen that exist in West Park and I don't think very many of them are primary. I don't think of our hundred and twenty-seven, we're gonna have very many primary licenses open, do you?
No.
I, I, you know, we've done kind of a quick look at what our current license landscape looks like and, and I don't think that we have a lot of primary use right now.
Maybe handful?
Yeah.
Any other questions on location?
Did you wanna look at any other maps before we go back to kind of the policy review here?
Those protected areas, based on some previous open houses that we've had, those protected areas really do cover the concerns of the community, particularly in West Park. That's a, that was a big deal for parking and availability and the change in neighborhood, very specifically to that neighborhood. Toledo, lots and lots of speculation up there right now, lots of speculation, a lot of it unreported, so that's a very good area to protect as well.
Great. Yeah, and I guess I, I mean, I understand the point about the cap and not expanding the, versus expanding the boundary. But I do think, and Commissioner Fiedler mentioned it earlier, like those neighborhoods around Four and Seventeen probably have a lot of vacant properties to develop into rentals potentially.
Right, I think, I think, I think, you know, we're, we're pulling down some of that speculative approach both with, I don't know, we'll get into it in just a little bit, you know, not being, not being able to transfer licenses, not being able to have more than one short term rental per parcel. And then, option A or B has a very finite amount of standard STR use. C would be probably when you would be the most concerned, you know, potentially about looking at where is there opportunity for growth of new units. But if, if we go, if you were to consider option A or B, you are providing a ceiling of where that, how, what the degree of use is gonna be.
And I do prefer to do a number for a ceiling rather than a percentage because I just think that, you know, as, I mean, with all best intentions, you know, it was, it does feel a little bit like, when I think what the city added like the thirty short term rental options because there was so much corrosion building in the city. And it's like, oh, it just feels like, even though you're staying with that percentage and that ratio, just kind of feels like you're missing the mark a little bit.
As long as you're basing it on a percentage, so that you have some comparison to other counties, then you don't run into a legal problem later on where it can be challenged as an arbitrary number. So, I saw that number seems to work just fine, but if you can base it on the percentages like Anne is doing, either the one and a half percent or the six point three percent, as it compares to other local counties, then you have a leg to stand on. And it's harder to be challenged by somebody who wants to come in and add a whole bunch of short term notes.
Sure.
Yeah, I think that's a good point, and I also think the city like has struggled a little bit. They, I've, I've heard that they might go to just a, a number versus a percentage, but, but.
Well, we're doing exactly the same thing, we're gonna go to a number, but we're gonna go to a number based on a percentage of what, our problem is the assessor. So, we can't give you an exact number because the assessor can't give us an exact number. But as long as we base it on the percentage we're shooting for, which is twelve percent, then we have a justifiable number. There's a reason, it's not just a number pulled out of the air that somebody thought sounded good, it was actually based on something. So, once again, that's just a legal leg to stand on there.
Sure.
Yes, a number makes perfect sense, but it has to be based on something.
Sure, and I think you base that on the ratio, but I think you also, like, we've talked about the other factors in here, you know, I don't think it needs to be so tightly married to that percentage.
Makes perfect sense and it's a whole lot easier to keep track of. Cause it doesn't change all the time.
Right, right.
It just is something that needs to be based on some reasonable factor.
Yep. So, I, does the categorizing then primary and standard, does that make sense? The opportunity for adding the tenant option, Rachel, I believe that was a recommendation from our legal counsel, our, our land use counsel, that we maybe open it up as we're, as we're focusing on sustainability and community housing needs, that there was an opportunity to include renters where the property owner is okay with them taking advantage of maybe race weekends and things like that to help with housing cost. And so, that is, and you will see that wherever we could, you know, we've spent time with the city's code and a lot of the recommendations are similar to, to what they have. And wherever we found an opportunity to, to marry the two codes together, that's where we're headed because I think it's better when a community has a pretty consistent code. But this, this is, this is something that the city hasn't, hasn't included, but, but we thought maybe there was an opportunity to maybe expand, just, just to try to really hit that sustainability mark.
I wonder, yeah, I do, I do really like that and I wonder, I'm just curious, before landing on the primary residence title, you know, I had had in my mind and it had been suggested by other folks we've worked with to do the, or, sorry, I bet a lot of communities do at least one, one of the properties have to be a long-term living situation, which I think is, it is the same thing you are saying. Is there a nuance there in that, that was explored between one of, one of?
Wouldn't primary, wouldn't primary, I may include a long-term component?
I would, yes, I would assume so.
Or a long-term rental that Ben has a license?
Yes, so I'm just, I'm thinking, I'm trying to think aloud if there's.
So, what we're proposing, because we, we definitely heard like, so, we did a code amendment where we incentivize ADUs for, to address long-term rentals. However, we were talking, we've been talking about an exception in the short term rental code where as we would let a primary owner have, hold a primary license and then a standard license for an ADU. So that would be the only exception to disallowing ADUs to not be able to be used as short term rentals. So, in the instance where you would have a primary license at, at the main house, then that primary owner could have a standard license for an ADU. But that would be the only exception too, because that would check a box of sustainability for community housing without kind of taking away from our planning grant incentivizing local housing through ADUs serving as long-term rentals.
Is there, is there, in that, is there an except, or not an exception, but like, so, so let's say you're, you're a primary resident and you have a house and an ADU on that same property, so you're entitled to one primary resident license. Is, is there flexibility? I mean, can you live in your ADU and short term rental, the larger house, like as you downsize it, you know?
I don't think, right?
Wasn't, wasn't crystal clear from the bullets whether it had to be the main?
It's not supposed to work that way. It's not to say that it can't, but that's not the intent.
Yeah.
I don't, I don't, and we, you, we, you know, this, I don't, I don't think we should restrict the ADUs to not be, like, hard not be short term rentals cause I think they, either property could be the long term or the short term. And I think that, I'm not certain though, help me understand if the primary residence actually covers the, one of the units has to be the long term rental because it could, nobody, the long-term renters could be the primary residence, but not the owners. And I feel like I remember reading something where it was the owner of the property that had to get the license. So, is it the owner of the property that has to be the primary resident? Because I wonder if we're kind of shooting ourselves in the foot, cause somebody could own a property, have a long-term rental and a short-term rental, but be needing our housing goals by at least long-term renting one of the properties.
I think, I think that's completely allowable under this, right? So, I mean, long-term is, so, are you saying on the same parcel, you would have a short-term rental and a long-term rental? And you'd be owner occupied with that?
No, if it's not owner occupied.
Well, to your new proposals, Anne, say that either the owner occupier can have a short-term rental license or the long-term rental tenant can have a short-term rental license. It can be either or.
And if it's limited to the one per property, then that by de facto, you either have, you have one unit open for the owner use or whatever else, long-term rental. So, I think that does, I think that does.
But yeah, right now, the license holder could be either a long-term tenant with the owner's understanding or the owner.
Yeah.
But as to whether it could be one or both, is the short-term rental, that would be Anne's answer, I'm not sure.
And that would be, that would just be a standard license rather than the primary residence license if it was an owner. And the limit of one makes at least, kind of forces something different to be done. Which, which is great, but it all, it, it seems, it does also still seem a little bit different that like, one has to be a long-term.
So, it can only be one short-term rental per parcel, is that correct?
It can only be one short-term rental per parcel, except, so, we were creating an exception where you could have, that like, oh, excuse me, I'm, now I'm, it's one per parcel, yes.
So, I have a specific, in, in Panarc, there's Windmere cabins and they have four or five cabins on that parcel, do each of those cabins have to have their own license?
They are not a short-term rental by definition. Four cabins is a conditional use permit. And the Windmore cabins existed prior to zoning, so they're an exit, pre-existing legal use. So, until they change their degree of use, then they, otherwise they have to come under conditional use permit. So, we, multi-units are conditional use.
Gotcha.
They're vacation lodges, group camps, motels, hotels, things like that.
Makes sense, okay.
Yeah, I guess I don't, I think I talked myself through that, sorry, but.
No, that's okay.
I don't know, and this might just be splitting hairs, I don't know then if it's necessary to say an ADU can't be a short-term rental unless it's a primary residence license holder.
I think to, I think that we have to consider that, the emphasis that we put on ADUs for DOLA, for the planning grant, to incentivize local housing. So, so, I, I think to be consistent in our code, disallowing ADUs for standard licenses, or in, unless, you know, unless it's an owner occupied situation. I, I think the only, the only way to allow ADUs to serve as a short-term rental is in an owner occupied situation.
Based on the code changes that we've done and the planning grant.
Right, I mean, we wanna keep, we want, we don't want to take away from the value that we put in restricting the ADUs in the policy. So, I think that as long as we're allowing an exception that again speaks to sustainable, sustainability of housing or creating community housing opportunity, I think we're fine. But I think that if we open it up to standard licenses for non-residents or non, you know, primary residents, then, then we've taken. or non, you know, primary residents, then, then we've taken away from what we've put into the code. So we just want to be really careful to think about how we approach that.
I didn't realize we kind of put that in that strictly in around the ADUs. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, we did that one week before we did that one year.
Okay.
Okay, moving on, is that, are we?
Because I think, because that was, that was one of those checklist things that we had to get checked out before we applied, right?
Actually, we did it, it was one of the strategies that we used, and we did it right now.
Yeah, or after, actually, yes.
Yeah, actually, before we applied, that's right. So we did several. We've, we've been pretty aggressive about our strategies.
Yeah.
So I, I think that allowing this very restricted use of ADUs under short-term rental licensing, as long as it is still keeping consistent with our mission to utilize them as an opportunity to increase community housing options. I think that we're staying, you know, we're still headed toward our norm. But if, if we open it up to non, or just standard licensing with non-primary occupancy, then I think that we're, we're sending a different message, so. Okay. Next slide here will be, okay. So we've already gone through, the primary resident is not going to be subject to the caps, maximum one per resident, and standard subject to the license caps, and in either option A or B. Maximum of one license per parcel, licenses not allowed for ADUs unless it's the primary residence, and licenses are non-transferable at sale or transfer of title. So this was huge. And as Rachel said, it's become a, you know, best practice in that, that, you know, that had the ability to artificially inflate. And we really heard that from a lot of feedback that we got. It's not fair, their marketing, that they have a short-term rental license, or a short-term rental that's making eighty thousand dollars a year, sixty thousand dollars. It was like, that was a big discussion when we put the moratorium in place in Twin Lakes. And so this completely takes away that, you know, art of, so it does several things, including not allowing kind of artificial inflation of our market rate properties. So that's, it's a big win. Any questions on that?
Once we do pass the resolution of this works, could we then put out that information to local real estate agents so that they're worried about as well? Because that's a big part of the real estate marketing, right, and of course?
Absolutely. We can, we can, you know, we'll have good information on our website, and we can certainly shoot that out to area real estate agents. Usually those are, are folks that are more engaged and know, it's usually our, you know? So we'll, we'll let those folks know, but sometimes, you know, we get that coming in from out of areas that they're a little harder to capture. But they have a duty to understand their code of ethics. They should be doing their own research and making sure they know. So, but absolutely, good, good stakeholder to have present in our regulations. So this just kind of shows that, or, you know, that variable could be option A or B. But this shows that we would cap the, again, the standard licenses, and we would further restrict that community housing overlay area and not at where we currently are. So just talked about how new licenses become available. And then we'll be working on, and the city does a waitlist process where they do, on a first-come, first-served basis, with a single point of entry, and very stringent guidelines on what constitutes a complete application. And so we can either do a very similar administrative waitlist process, or there's always a lottery option as well. And so when we bring the code forward, we'll be bringing forth our proposal on how to manage that administratively. Local contact requirement, so the city's code does say that you have to be able to respond within an hour. And I know Rachel, based on her travel to the high country for the town hall, she had some hiccups getting here, thought maybe it should be a distance. I, I would say that hopefully somebody local, even in inclement weather, I think an hour might, even like this weekend, for instance. If you got a call out on a short-term rental, could you have been there within an hour in, in the kind of inclement weather that we have this, this, this weekend? And I, and I would say, yeah, I think, I think you could get there within an hour. So I think in, in most cases, so I think that the, what we'll be drafting, we'll bring forward kind of that consistent. Not only are you local, and our code did actually ask for two, if you don't have a property management company, then two local contacts, one of which, so it kind of gives that backup option. Like, if your, if your first one isn't available, one can be the owner, you have a backup person locally. So that just, I think increases the ability to be able to get there within an hour. So if you can't, you've got somebody a little closer that can get there within an hour. If you've got a broken gas meter, if we've got whatever it might be from ice or something. Maintain annual renewal requirements. So again, this is, as, as we look at capping, we want to make sure that if we're putting a limit on the amount of licenses, that they're actually being used. And somebody's not just applying because I might decide to use it at some point. And so in capping them, we want to assume that they're actually being used. And Rachel spoke with Adam and just kind of looked at occupancy numbers to make sure that, again, fourteen is the Cindy standard, and, and we looked to what visitation looks like and occupancy looks like, and that, that seems like a very reasonable number, an approach.
Can I come back to the local contact for a second? My brain was like thinking of the different wrinkles of that, like, I, I think, or I, I don't know if local contact is defined, but I was thinking, like, either, I mean, either the management company, if it's one point of contact, has to be in county. Because I'm thinking of like what, like, I mean, the passes close, but within county, most of the time, even in that, whether you, within an hour, you can get somewhere in the county. So I'm thinking of, so if either the management company or one of the two contacts has to be in county on this side of the passes that close.
So something to think about on this is emergencies are going to be things like, you get a water leak, or snow fell and covered up your gas meter, or you smell gas in the place. It really is an emergency. It's not that you're low on toilet paper. So having somebody who is locally available.
Yeah.
Potentially is a liability issue, so it is more important. So somebody in county or available, like physically available within an hour is probably pretty important. You know, you can't be local if you're managing your short-term rental from Denver.
Yeah. No, just like, I mean, like, within, within an hour could be, could be out of county.
You'd probably be pushing it, I mean, if, if you've got an emergency, you know, I, I think, I think an hour is to consider inclement, whether we would want, you'd want them as quickly as possible.
Yeah.
But I think that we want to consider, because I, I thought of that too. I'm like, well, that means maybe you could be in Buena Vista, you could be in Salida, you could be in Summit, or maybe you could get here in an hour. So the, the code that we're proposing does represent that somebody, that one of these is Lake County.
Yeah, I guess I'm just thinking, like, if the passes are closed and you're having that kind of emergency, the property manager has to have some plan.
Yes.
Or some, if some, like, one of the two contacts are.
They have to be local. They have to be at Lake County. So we did, we have specified it in the code that they, you know, of that mix. So.
Okay.
So we either have a property management company that is based in Lake County, or the, and then, and then if you don't have a Lake County-based, then you have to have two, the owner, it can be the owner and someone else, but between the two of them, one has to be, actually reside in Lake County and be able to respond to the property within an hour.
Sure.
On that same slide, have you thought, so fourteen nights short-term rental is tax-free currently. Fourteen nights usually means that somebody's going to rent their house out for the races, for the two weeks, all at the same time in the middle of the summer. What about raising that fourteen-night minimum to a higher number, like twenty-one nights?
Because it's fourteen, you don't need a license?
Short-term rental licenses affect it. Say that again?
You don't need a license for fourteen days or less?
No, no, you need the license, but if you only need it for fourteen nights, that's tax-free. So a lot of people will use that loophole. But that also means that they're only ever going to rent for fourteen nights, and so that house is going to sit vacant the other fifty-four weeks of the year. Raising that to twenty-one nights makes it a little bit more than incentive to make it a true short-term rental that does actually get used during the year, rather than one specific block of two weeks every summer only. Something to think about, because the fourteen nights is a little bit of a loophole, but it's also such a minimum standard that, you know, people have it as a convenience. They're not really using it as a short-term rental. They're not using it to supplement their income. They're not using it to pay for the house.
I jotted that, that down as a question. I'd be open to making that number higher.
And it doesn't have to be, it doesn't have to be a hugely higher number, but take, ma- making them have a little bit of skin in the game, whoever they are applying for the license, would seem to make sense for us.
Yeah, because if you're taking it out of the local housing inventory, you want it to actually be used to help meet lodging and.
That's correct. It needs to generate some income if it's taking it out of the, out of the long-term rental market. And that's one of the things we could do. It really would make an impact on the commercial users.
Yeah.
The people who want the license solely for their own convenience, they're not actually contributing anything to the, to the community, if that makes sense.
Yeah, again, this is just for the standard licenses, not the primary.
That's right.
Yeah, absolutely.
Is, is it, is it, has it changed that, is it, has it been in our, the county code? And I feel like it was in city code, maybe it's changed, but there's something where if you, if you're, if you short-term rent for fourteen days or less, then you don't need a license or something?
That has to be in our code?
Not in the.
No, no, you can't get a short-term rental license if you don't rent for at least fourteen days. Now, that's in there. But no, there's no, there's no way we're having a short-term license. The problem is that at only fourteen days, it's very easy for people to, and people will just go online and rent it to themselves for fourteen days, keep their license, they keep that benefit. But they're not adding any, you know, they're not adding housekeepers, they're not adding people going out to eat. They're not, you know, they're not adding anything to the community.
I wonder if that fourteen day was also, is also linked to the fact that if you have an investment property, you're only allowed to use it for fourteen days during the year, or it's not considered.
That's an excellent point.
An investment property anymore?
Once again, a, a, a tax law.
Yeah.
So making that change would absolutely affect the number of short-term rental licenses they can apply for and would make them more productive, especially if you're considering keeping the lower cap. Now, you're right, I missed that one entirely, but both of those are, are tax rules.
And I know I'm not doing a great job articulating it, but I think I feel like, I wonder if that's the productivity of a property. I think that's, and I'm not, I'm not going to debate the ADU piece, but I feel like if we actually want somebody to use at least one of them as a long-term or primary and a short-term.
Then you need to make it slightly uncomfortable.
Smaller unit, sorry. Like, why, you know, I, I might opt, and I do not have an ADU, but I might opt to do my, to rent out my smaller unit rather than my full home. And if I don't want to impact my full home, and I'm not allowed to rent out my ADU, then I just wouldn't do anything.
When you say full home, are you meaning one that you primarily occupy, or you mean the, the house that you have?
No, as a, as a, as a, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Which, which scenario?
The investment.
Because if you don't live in the.
If you don't live on the property.
The investment property, the owner can only use it fourteen year, fourteen days a year in order for it to still qualify as an investment property. And so in that scenario, they still have to rent the primary house out in order to qualify as an investment property, whether it be short or long term.
Yeah.
Anne, what are your thoughts on that, that I brought up, of extending that for fourteen days and trying to make those slightly more productive?
Well, sure. No, I, I wrote it down as a recommendation.
It's a, that one stands out pretty big in Lake County in particular, because we have so many second homes. Those two loopholes make it really easy to, to suck up those short-term rental licenses and not have them be productive the vast majority of the year. Even a slight change to that changes the way somebody approaches a short-term rental license.
Is the city thinking about changing that as well?
What's that?
Is the city considering changing that as well?
Yes.
And, and just if you're considering a different number, keep in mind too, that that fourteen-day investment property usage doesn't include days when they're there doing some sort of work on the property or whatever, so they don't have to count those towards the fourteen days. If you're going to increase that, you might want to consider, okay. Is somebody going to choose, you know, fourteen weekends and say, oh, well, I worked on the property one of those days, so it doesn't count towards my fourteen days, or something like that? So just in terms of, and again, you want a number that, as, as Joey mentioned, that you can justify. It's not just, you know, something you kind of grab and say, okay, we think this will be the standard that will help achieve this goal of making it more productive.
So for instance, somebody who's only renting for fourteen nights isn't necessarily going to hire a property manager company. They're not necessarily going to hire house cleaners to come. They're not necessarily going to use ice cream as laundry, things like that. So all of those things add to revenues that come into the county.
Rachel, do you have any feedback?
And she hopped off.
Oh, she did?
She put in the chat, she had to hop off.
Oh, okay. So we can work on, we'll look at consideration for all of those aspects in, for the renewal and have a recommendation in, within the court amendment. Okay. Next slide, okay. Well-inseptic. So this, you know, setting strict occupancy limits is really key to manage that. That coupled with the septic inspections. We're also suggesting, and we haven't, I don't know if David has given me a number yet, of how many existing short-term rentals are actually on seepage pits. But that, that one's, that one's kind of a, a pretty restrictive item. But as you may have heard, or, or, you know, was brought up in the, in the town hall, that where seepage pits don't always tend to fail, they do, they don't, they don't have a treatment aspect before they release. And so they tend to have a greater threat to groundwater. And so immediately eliminating kind of these non-modern systems as being, because, and I think that there is more of a, of a concern there, because again, the system may be operating fine, and you may not realize the damage that it, that it's, that it's having. So it's kind of, could be kind of this silent potential attack that, that wouldn't have a lot of triggers or safeguards for there to be a concern that something's happening. They might be caught at the inspection, but if we're doing that every three years, then a bit could happen. So the thought was eliminating seepage pits as, certainly you can go in and you can upgrade your system to address that and install a treatment area if you want to, you know, continue on. But right now, I don't have an actual number of how many units I think that has setbacks. I would say, obviously, there's areas in the county that aren't on septic. Do we know how many of our rentals are on septic? I think we do have that. I think it's over seventy percent. Okay. So, I mean, we do have, you know, quite a few that are on septic systems. But, so that, that, that's probably one of the biggest limitations that we're going to be presenting is that seepage pits are a longer and acceptable system. And then we're, we're creating an opportunity, like we talked about, because of capacity, to give them a little bit of grace here to get these inspections done. And then, you know, we also brought it up that this is best practice. If you are a property owner that has a septic system, you should be getting it pumped and inspected routinely. And so the thought of every three years doesn't seem excessive, especially when you're, you're allowing other use of the property other than your own. So we, we think that this is. So we think that this is not an overly aggressive, but a very needed aspect of the regulation. So any questions on septic?
Is there any way to, is part of the big problem with the function of the septic systems that maybe, sorry. What's this treatment area?
The absorption area, the water treatment absorption area.
Right, the absorption area. And that's, but that has nothing to do with the pumping?
The tank.
The tank, right?
So there's the tank, and then the tank goes, then the solids are kept in the tank, and liquids are pushed into and treated into the absorption area and then released. So through that filtration system, they detoxify.
Gotcha, yeah, yeah, okay, okay.
But the tanks is pumped to make sure that it's working properly, there's no cracks in it, that it's functioning.
And that absorption area has the proper time to...
Exactly.
And input to do its function.
So something to think about there when you're thinking about the septic systems. If you're on a septic system, you're probably on a well. And if you're in a place like Twin Lakes, Phillish, some of your wells are only seventy-five feet deep. So that's where the not having an absorption field and not having a proper working septic system can be a very big problem for the entire area. In Panarc, where you've got houses kind of literally on top of each other, that becomes more and more of an issue. Those are newer and will have better septic systems, but a lot of these areas have very shallow wells, and that's where not allowing the seepage pits is smart business.
And that, but the seepage, and the seepage pit is one...
It's like a, it's like a septic system.
It's not the system I just explained, right?
No, it's a different, it's a different system.
It's a line that goes out to a...
That was what I had in mind.
To a tank, and then it just seeps out when it overflows. It's a real problem for things like ingrown water.
Right, okay.
Not something you really want to have working there.
Okay.
Especially if it's going to get high use like a shower.
Absolutely, yeah, yeah.
And, you know, they were very popular up until probably about twenty-twenty, twenty-thirteen, when we do, when we did the new regulations. So there's a lot, there's a lot of seepage pits in Lake County.
Wow, I thought they were much older than that.
So a lot of them are, but the old ones are all rotten now, so they're getting replaced slowly, but...
But they went back in the nineties and early two thousands, still they were being, the seepage pits were still in use.
Wow, I thought they were all from the seventies.
Yeah, this is actually really, really good business, what you're proposing there.
So, okay, thumbs up, yeah, I like it, okay. And then this is on anything that has centralized utilities, so standard would be two per bedroom, and then allowing for those sleeper sofas, a bunk bed stuck in a family room, something like that. So we were thinking plus one, but we looked at Leadville's code, and they allow two in addition, and so, you know, maybe we just want to be consistent. So the code amendment will come in with two, unless we hear an objection. But again, these are centralized utilities, so no outdoor fires.
That's plus two for the whole house, not...
Yes, yeah, overall, the whole, the whole house. No outdoor fires, so absolutely no wood fires, no fire ring use, nothing like that. Someone did ask, and we are working with the fire department, what about a propane grill? Sarah, do you have some feedback on propane appliances outside?
Sorry, me, right?
Yes.
I felt like you were just... I, so I would, well, I would offer, I guess when there are fire bans and you go on recreation trips, like on the river, you can bring a propane fire pit. So that's kind of the alternative. So I would, I would feel comfortable allowing gas fire pit or propane, something, an alternative.
A fuel-fired.
Yeah.
A fuel-fired appliance, but no wood fires, no outdoor fire rings and things like that. So we...
Typically, the fire pits that you're talking about are going to be self-contained and above ground.
Yep.
They're not, they're...
Right.
They are truly self-contained units.
Yep, right.
And would, I mean, and you can turn them off.
Yeah.
Right?
And there's no embers, I mean, that's probably the problem, right? People making bonfires and getting things out of control, and sparks igniting other fuels around the house. So that is reduced and effectively gone when you have, yeah.
You don't have that fire, potential for fire spread, ignition from sparks. So, but we heard a lot of concerns about outdoor fires.
So would you...
Property owners.
Would you rephrase that to just, to address that fuel type of fire?
Yeah, we would, we'll get more specific about no wood fires or fire pits or any type of use, but the only thing that's allowed are contained, self-contained, fuel-driven...
Well, no, or no wood-fueled.
Yeah, no wood, yeah.
Wood-fueled fire, yeah.
So would you leave out fire pits entirely and only allow things like propane grills? Or would you leave it open to propane fire pits?
As long as there's not, as long as, you know, I think, and we were going to, we were going to go to the fire department for best practice too, so we'll ask for their recommendation. But what I'm hearing is, you know, like propane grills, not a problem. You know, I don't, I don't know about like a fire pit that is non-wood, whether or not there's any risk there, but we would definitely look to a recommendation on the code from the fire department. So we would follow whatever they recommend and bring that forward.
And I would doubt that there would be a lot of risk there. I mean, I know a lot, you know, restaurants have that outside, right, like Treeline has that.
Yeah, even though, or those heating holes and things like that.
Like Sarah said, you just don't get those embers kicking off or the coals that can kick up again once you're asleep.
I would say that that's what we believe, but we'll just, just for good practice, we'll get a statement from Leadville County Fire that will inform the policy so that we can say that's how we landed on it. Education. So this is really big, and I don't think that we should, you know, think that, oh, you know, this isn't a regulation, so, you know, it's not going to be overly effective. But we have to assume for owners that they have a huge investment, and they want, have a desire to protect that investment. And honestly, in the education around septic that Cece and David did, the feedback that they kept telling us is they just didn't really understand. You know, they didn't understand that they could be potentially threatening their septic system. They just didn't really even understand how their septic system worked overall. And so, and that they were able to get compliance, but occupancy started mattering when they started really understanding it. And that took some one-on-one coaching and conversations to have property owners understand. So I don't think that we can underestimate the effect that this will have in educating owners and making sure that they fully understand. You know, the other thing is that people believe they can bank days, like, hey, we're never in that property. Our system's sized for six, but nobody's been in there for six months. So, yeah, you can have a group of twenty, you know, it's like, so, you know, people think they can kind of bank their occupancy sometimes too, because properties haven't been in use, and that creates a shock to the system and obviously does damage, so can potentially cause significant damage. So you can't, you know, even things like that, that people don't really understand, that you can't bank your occupancy days and things like that. So we definitely, and then, you know, some of these tips and tricks came from Grand West. They are very cognizant of how to manage their septic systems, so they even, they put a rest period in between bookings, and they don't do the laundry within the unit, so they're not putting that burden on the individual septic systems. They have a different laundry facility that they use, and so, and because of their practices and discussion with the state, their septic system actually has greater capacity because of the way they actually monitor it, protect it, and take care of it. So there were some great lessons learned there that we would love to use as teaching tips and tricks that we can push out. So the code would just say that we will have a form, just like we always have. We've always asked them to acknowledge things like egress windows. We've always asked them to acknowledge the fact that over-maximizing your system is a good, you know. But now we're going to, we're going to give them more literature, more education, and again, an acknowledgement. And then excited about the work that Adam's doing with the state initiative on those Leadville, you know, the Good Neighbor Guides. So we actually had Melissa Hill volunteer. You know, I've heard really great things that Melissa was, she's no longer doing property management for RE/MAX on short-term rentals, but she did things like she went out and she gave her cards to all of the property owners adjacent to the short-term rental and said, hey, if you ever have a problem, call me, I'll be here. And she offered her knowledge and expertise and experience to this process, so we're putting her in contact with Adam. And so again, you know, things like, we heard complaints at the town hall, hey, people are out wandering around trespassing on my property. You know, so they're just educating the guests to, on what is proper etiquette, what's trail etiquette, what's, you know, what's our neighborhood expectation, things like that. So, you know, I think that these Good Neighbor Guides will hopefully go a long way to in educating people that are guests within our community. System dos and don'ts, that'll be a requirement, a code that'll actually be, we'll ask them to put information in the house above sinks, kitchen sink especially, of things that you don't, and bathrooms, things, you know, we have a septic system, these items should not be placed down it. And then fire, wildlife, trash, and other best, the code does speak to proper trash. We've had a request, a proper trash management, bear-proof containers, things like that, making sure your guests know how to dispose of their trash in a safe manner if you're in a rural area. Also, we've had a request from C4, you know, I think they would love to see if we would codify requirements around recycling, but I think at the very minimum, we'd like to emphasize the importance for property owners to consider recycling opportunities. And so we would love to introduce that again as one of those teachable times and encourage good recycling practices and trash practices. So requiring that they educate, that they have something within the unit that directs, that tend on how to dispose of trash safely and properly will be required, and then we're encouraging them to consider incorporating recycling practices as well. Wildfire, wildlife fire, you know, we just want to get more, the more information as possible. And a lot of times when people are visiting an area, they want to know all of those things. They're curious and they want to know how to, to kind of blend in. So I think that there's an opportunity, you know, a pretty ripe opportunity to do those kind of things. Maintain enforcement mechanisms in the code. We have a very strong code, and so that same hearing, show cause hearing process that I brought to OHV came directly from short-term rental. So it has not been a use that we historically have taken a lot of complaints on, but we have a very swift process if we determine that someone is in violation, they have to disclose any violations at the time of renewal. And so those are things are considered as part of being able to renew their license as well. So we take those very seriously, and we've got some good strength on that. Monitoring the listings, we currently do that. And again, before we even get to that slide, I think one of the reasons that we have, our enforcement is so successful and that we stay at about ninety-seven to ninety-nine percent compliance is because of the personal touch, because you get a call not from a third-party company that isn't local, you get a call from CPD, you get a call from an amazingly nice person named Cece, who is, you know, is willing to help you and educate you and find, and we always assume you didn't know, and we're going to hear, and we're going to help you. And it's wildly successful. So I would say that our compliance is outstanding. The fire check, we'll do those every three years, and it doesn't just, I talked to Steve and interviewed him, so all of these things that we're concerned about, but he also looks at, is the gas meter protected? What do the appliances in the house look like? Hot water heaters look good, or do we have a hot water heater in the sleeping room unbitted? Do we have, you know, so he does even another, a little more thorough inspection, so that's pretty exciting.
One, tell me, I think it's a CO detector, not a CO2 detector, right?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, that's carbon monoxide.
Sure.
Carbon, yeah. So...
In the, in the city for short-term rentals, I know that you're required to block off any wood burning fireplace systems like that. I'm assuming that would be the same for the county as well.
We don't have that. We don't have, you mean within the, in the house itself, like discouraging them using a fireplace?
So if they have a wood burning stove...
I didn't see that in their code.
It's a, I've done a ton of these checks with T oil, and any wood burning appliance is blocked off with a big notice, this is not available for use.
Okay, so that may be, it's not codified within the code, that it says that you...
I guess it's not, and I wasn't aware of it.
In the city code?
It's a pretty big deal in the city. So, yeah, the safety checks are big, obviously, smoke detectors and carbon monoxide detectors, but they actually make sure that you've serviced your furnace and your gas running appliances, and then you can prove that, and then blocking off any wood burning stoves or fireplaces or anything like that, they're, they are in-depth checks, he does a very good job.
So, but neither in, I don't propose to put it in the code, I propose it to be part of the fire safety check.
Agreed.
And inclusive in there, so. You know, I let somebody one time use our fireplace, and it was building a house for someone, and we were going to Washington, and so they came and stayed and used our fireplace one time, and they got it burned on my hardwood floor. I was just like...
Fires up here can be hard to start if you're not familiar yet. You can create a lot of problems with smoke.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Something about using some kind of torch, I don't know, but that was just like a friend using our house. So I totally agree.
Yeah, I guess you can't short-term rent a house that's actually heated with a wood stove then.
Oh, what, if, you mean if that's its only source of... Yeah, you know...
I mean, I'm not advocating one or the other, just like you can...
Right, I know, I was like, mm, that might be hard.
Usually it's, usually it's an insurance thing. You can't get insurance for a short-term rental that uses a wood heat thing.
Interesting.
Maybe the regulation is coming in a different direction.
Yeah, I think that's kind of, you know, suffering, and I would say that the majority of our housing units that are being used as short-term rentals are...
All stoves are still going to be self-contained.
You know, that's not their only, you know, that's not their only source.
Yeah.
You know, it's kind of a different housing type.
It's completely...
Not, not, things are changing, but...
Yeah.
That's why they're screwed up.
Typically, you know, I can't think of any situation that we probably have a bit like that, but the fire safety check would come back and probably say, hey, there is no other heat source in this house, and we don't indoors begin to use this, and they may not pass the fire check.
Yeah.
But, you know, it would definitely bring up a situation like that, like, what are we going to do? So...
Yeah, I just wanted to note, we were ten minutes...
Are we, okay, we're done?
I mean, we are okay to start our works, our regular meeting late if we have to, but just wanted to...
I think we're pretty good. You know, we're definitely going to increase data collection, we're going to, we've already updated the licensing fee, so that was done in our cost recovery. We did ask for capital or for a budget ask of considering an impact fee, Nexus study to, we included in there, looking at a housing regulatory fee as well as infrastructure and safety and...
And that's just on the short-term rentals?
That's just, this would just be, this would just be coming up with a regulatory fee specific to short-term rentals.
Would that be a collection of fire department, public works, and like response and demand on those?
So this, this, so the Nexus study for a housing regulatory fee is housing-specific, but the impact fee that I asked for would include all those other aspects. So there's a couple of different levels of study. So a housing regulatory fee includes the impact to housing, but we are asking for an impact study that would consider the impact of development on all of those services. And then, you know, MuniRev... And then, you know, MuniRev or host compliance, again, I I'm really proud of our in-house compliance. So in and as we are building capacity, I continue to hope that this is a service that we keep in-house. If if we had that kind of open-ended license and we had hundreds of licenses, I would say we can't continue. But even up with the proposed cap of one hundred and seventy, that and based on traditional use, I don't see where if the cap was raised to one hundred and seventy, suddenly we're going to max that out in the first year. You know, we just haven't seen that kind of, even when licenses were abundantly available and allowed everywhere, we didn't see that kind of growth. So I think that that'll be a sustainable cap for and allow opportunity for growth over, you know, a three-to-five-year period. And that's it. How am I doing? Time away. Oh, you're at eight minutes.
Can I make one more point? And it's just something that we went over when we were doing short-term rentals for the city. You can cap your number at a number, you can cap your licenses at a number. But something to consider once again, to preclude any future liabilities, is consider how that number in the future could be revisited. Is it, do you increase it by a percentage every year, which nobody in the city really liked? One thing that we were looking at doing was review it every two years and have an increase based on the number of building permits, something that's measurable. And you don't have to put that in there, but it's something to think of.
I wouldn't I wouldn't codify something like that. I would just say that we could talk about that, it's like, how do we monitor it? You know, like, how do we monitor backcountry? Great, great suggestion, but I wouldn't I wouldn't put it in code and and I would say that's just best practice to on any code amendment that you want to be monitoring and making sure that, you know, those percentages and numbers are in line. Or ratchet it down, you know, you may want to ratchet it up, you may want to ratchet it down.
Right.
Would would you put in code like that? Because Cece may, you know, in the future reconsider and put in, I could see putting in like a timeline for review, just
I wouldn't put it in the code if you want to put something in the whereas is in your resolution.
So, yeah, and then I wouldn't put in criteria, like, I wouldn't say I wouldn't say based on, you know, I would just
Yeah, I think I think this is all of the the information and evidence that informed the reg, you know, and and so we keep the, we can keep those things alive and those ideas maybe in a whereas in a resolution that kind of guides that. But in the code itself, I would say all of that is is the culmination of, you know, what we're doing right now.
Yeah.
Do you want, uh, primary resident and standard license fees are the same?
Yes.
Okay.
And they and they're either the same, so that's where the regulatory fee would come in to kind of be that equalizer. But the fee for the license that we are, is an administrative cost recovery. So there isn't really the way to look at, I wouldn't say that we administer coming up a standard license or a primary license any differently. That the adjustment in cost would would come with with like a nexus study on a housing regulatory on and and that'd be the way you could differentiate between standard and primary.
That could apply to the standard only, yeah. I just wanted to check, are we, it's just, are we, do I need straw poll leaning towards that option A of like the numerical number without
We go back to the option?
I think A and B are both numerical, A keeps it at the
At one-twenty-seven.
Number we have now, but that might fluctuate a little bit as some might get associated with primary rather than standard. And B bumped it to one-seventy, which is a six-point-three or six-point-eight.
Yeah. So the one has a growth up to one hundred and seventy, similar to the city of Leadville. Our percentages, when I look and compare, like Joey, you know, has has referenced, we're not disproportionate, you know, we look like we're in line. Certainly with the city of Leadville, which is looking at trying to arrive at about twelve percent. And and other communities, here's our comparison. I can look at that if you want, or is it beneficial to stand this for a minute?
I would, I'm open to increasing, but I wonder if we can, because of implementing this a new policy around regulatory, I would hate to have, well, I I don't know. I I would hate to have like a ton come in in a neighborhood because everyone's rushing to get these things now. So like, can we have a lower number or can we?
Yeah, oh, yeah, you could, I mean, we just did something similar to Leadville to kind of show what what that percentage would be. But you, the cap could be any number. We gave two examples, keeping where we are, increasing, increasing to one hundred and fifty, increasing to one hundred and sixty, increasing, you know, but
And in those CHO areas, that could not increase from right now.
That's nineteen and no.
Can you show your the schedule of the other counties, like For a little background for you guys, since you're talking about this today, city of Leadville decided on twelve percent
Oops.
and then a solid number based on that twelve percent. You'll notice that Chaffee County is very low.
But you look at their total licenses and their total house count.
Yeah, Summit County actually was challenged in court because they were challenged because they thought that the number they had set was too restrictive and became a punitive limit. So that's why when you're picking a number, you want to base it on
But has that been has that been settled?
I don't know if it's been settled.
And I think if we get challenged, we can revisit it. I would hate to bait, like, I think we have other layers, starting from the percentage of comparables, but we're all, we're so unique from, and we are also very unique.
We are unique and we're much, much smaller and and there's, my point wasn't which number you choose. I think any of those numbers are justifiable, it's just keep it justifiable.
Right.
Don't pick a hundred and fifty because you like that number and not base it on something.
Yeah, and I would just say that, you know, policies have to be challenged, but but when we don't know the outcome of it, it might be justification. You know, it may not, but I think that, I think there's three communities that have litigation pending and they haven't been, the results of which we don't know yet. But but they may become a finding for a whereas. So, you know, when we when we don't, you know, we, new policies of course are going to be challenged. And some of these, I don't think any of these are home rule, I don't know, which would give a little more longitude as well. But but again, I think we're staying, to Joey's point, I think that we're staying in a range that isn't crazy disproportionate to other communities. I mean, I think we're staying in a relatively
You're kind of right in line with the low end of that range, yes.
Yeah, so, so it's just one other kind of just, let's just, let's just kind of check a box to and make sure. So it's not really what we're solely basing anything on, but it's good to just make sure that we aren't grossly out of proportion.
Yeah.
Awesome, okay.
Okay.
And and we'll continue, and if you ever want to know where the voting's at, Cece can pull that anytime. So right now, voting is limited to per device. We can't differentiate between really, you know, we want to try to avoid as much of duplicate voting. So it is limited, Sarah told us, to one device.
Right.
So that hopefully will add a little bit of transparency.
We do continue to get a lot of public comment too. So that forty or fifty or so pages of public comment will increase over the next few days, so.
Okay.
We can sum that up as well.
Yeah, we will, we'll be doing kind of just a one-on-one check-in with each of you and the planning commission to, we're gonna, for the code amendment. So either establishing, when we start talking about caps, but that's the one, that'll be a very easy fluid change in the final policy. So whatever we bring forward for the public hearing, it's not like establishing that cap right now is really hard for us to maneuver within the code amendment. It is just one paragraph where we simply state whatever it is. So it's it's a very nimble change to the overall policy.
Okay.
Okay.
Cool.
Thanks.
Thank you.
So that is, that's our work session, we just had the one agenda item. Nice job, thank you, staff.
Thank you.
We'll start our regular meeting just a couple of minutes late while we shift over, adjust.